Title V, Section 551.041 of the Texas Government Code of the Texas Open Meetings Act, notice was given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville would conduct a regular meeting on Tuesday, March 16, 2021 at 5:00 PM via the WebEx teleconference meeting link provided at the City of Brownsville Agenda Center. The notice to meeting agenda are posted online at the Agenda Center. The members of the public wishing to participate in the meeting hosted through the WebEx link can join through the WebEx link provided. Members of the public who submitted a public comment form will be permitted to offer public comments as provided by the agenda and as permitted by the presiding officer during the meeting. A recording of the meeting will be made and will be available to the public in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. So we can call this meeting to order at 5:02 PM and I'll do a quick roll call. I have Commissioner Golatsky here. I have Commissioner Gowen here. I have Commissioner Tetro here. I have the mayor here. Has Commissioner Neese joined us? Okay, and Commissioner Cowan already said if he joins, he will be late. And Commissioner Mongia, I don't show him present either. Okay, whenever you're ready, Mayor.
Thank you, Lori. I'll now call the meeting to order.
Okay, well, we'll have our invocation by Pastor Brad Burke.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you so much for the many blessings we have here in the city of Brownsville. We thank you for the beautiful weather we're having right now and that we so often have in our city. We thank you for the rain we had and we ask you to send more in the amounts that will be good for us. Lord God, those that are needing healing in our city, we ask you to send it and bless them to full health. Those that have lost loved ones, we ask you to continue to comfort them and bless them. And Lord, we ask you to have your way in our nation in every respect, from Washington to Austin to here in Brownsville and around our nation. Lord God, for this meeting today, we ask you to give divine wisdom to our mayor and all of our city commissioners and everybody presenting any items. We thank you for the opportunities we have before us and we ask again for the best for the city of Brownsville. We thank you for all of these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. And now we'll have a short moment of silence where we can all add our prayers to what has been spoken. Amen. Thank you.
Our next item is proclamations. Our first proclamation is designating March 2021 as procurement month in the city of Brownsville and recognizing the city of Brownsville's Procurement and Contract Management Division of the Financial Services Department. This proclamation is sponsored by Commissioner Golatsky, Pizana, and Commissioner Cowan. Commissioner Golatsky, would you like to read the proclamation?
Sure. Okay, so this is a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, designating the month of March 2021 as procurement month, whereas professional procurement is crucial for the efficient and effective operation of the city of Brownsville. And whereas procurement professionals dedicate themselves to providing the best value for every taxpayer dollar, they provide high caliber strategic logistical and operational support for departments and they dedicate themselves to expanding their knowledge, skills, and abilities for the public good. And whereas, in addition to procuring goods and services, public procurement adds value to the organization by performing such functions as executing, implementing, and administering contracts, developing strategic procurement strategies, and cultivating working relationships with suppliers and other departments within the organization. And whereas, public procurement has tremendous influence on the economic conditions within the city of Brownsville, Cameron County, the state of Texas, and indeed across the United States with a cumulative procurement power writing into the billions of dollars. And whereas, the city of Brownsville's Procurement and Contract Management Division of the Financial Services Department is responsible for the facilitation and compliance of all procurement methods as directed by the city's approved procurement policy and administering the purchase order process and the procurement card program to deliver municipal services at the highest standards to our community. And whereas, NIGP, the Institute for Public Procurement, has established values and guiding principles, accountability, ethics, impartiality, professionalism, service, and transparency as fundamental tenets of the public procurement profession, and has proclaimed the month of March as procurement month to further expand the awareness of the procurement professional's role to government officials, the public, business, and corporate leaders. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, that the month of March 2021 be designated and recognized as procurement month in the city of Brownsville, and that citizens, city officials, and employees, community leaders, and businesses are encouraged to join the city commission and city management in showing appreciation and recognizing the city of Brownsville's Procurement and Contract Management Division of the Financial Services Department and the professionalism and service that they provide to the citizens, city staff, department directors, and city management. Additionally, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of Brownsville and on behalf of all of our citizens, the city commission humbly asks residents to join in recognizing the dedicated professionals that serve the city in the Procurement and Contract Management Division, done on this the 16th day of March 2021. And I believe Mr. Caldwell is here to receive the proclamation, so I would like for him to speak a little bit about his new role. He's just been working at the city for a few months and if he could just talk a little bit about what his plan is for his department.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and our distinguished commissioners. My name is Antonio Caldwell. I have the absolute pleasure of being the procurement contracting manager for the city and leading the division in this work. I'd like to extend a special thank you to Commissioner Golatsky, Pizana, and Commissioner Cowan for sponsoring this proclamation. Our division works diligently with our internal and external partners to procure the good and services that our communities and citizens need in an efficient and effective manner. We have a brand-new leadership, we have a brand-new team, and we are excited and working very hard with our partners in getting the job done. We do all of this while ensuring that we are obtaining the very best quality and value in those goods and services. And so I hope that all of you will join me in celebrating all those that work in procurement for the entire month or at least what's left of the month of March. So thank you very much. I appreciate that.
And thank you for joining the city of Brownsville team. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is designating March 2021 as National Nutrition Month in the city of Brownsville and supporting the nutrition education and information campaign created annually by the Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics. This is sponsored by Mayor Mendez and Commissioner Gowen.
Commissioner Gowen, I think it's appropriate that you read this if you like.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, designating the month of March 2021 as National Nutrition Month. Whereas National Nutrition Month is the nutrition education and information campaign created annually in March by the Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics, the campaign focuses attention on the importance of making informed food choices and developing sound eating and physical activity habits. And whereas food is a substance by which life is sustained, and whereas the type and quality and amount of food that individuals consume each day plays a vital role in their overall health and physical fitness. And whereas there is a need for continuing nutrition education and a wide-scale effort to enhance healthy eating practices in our state, county, and city. And whereas the city commission, Dr. Arturo Rodriguez, Public Health Director for the city of Brownsville, and Dr. Amy Gonzalez, South Region Director for the Texas Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics, fully support the Hidalgo County Employee Wellness Program and its initiatives, and in addition, fully support the efforts of the city of Brownsville's Public Health Department Wellness Division and the Division of Tu Salud Cuenta, Your Health Matters, campaign in collaboration with UT Health School of Public Health, Brownsville Regional Campus. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Commission of the city of Brownsville, that the month of March 2021 be designated and recognized as National Nutrition Month in the city of Brownsville, and that city officials and employees, city and community leaders and businesses are encouraged to join the campaign for both today and tomorrow. Additionally, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of Brownsville and on behalf of all of our citizens, the city commission humbly asks residents to join in making informed food choices and developing sound eating and physical activity habits, done on this 16th day of March 2021, signed by the mayor and the city commission. Is Dr. Rodriguez with us?
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners.
Would you like to say something?
I want to. I remember when we started the wellness and the Tu Salud Cuenta program and even HEB hiring a nutritionist, what a big day that was for us. So moving us forward almost 10 years later, to see us not only using nutritionists for wound care, but using nutritionists now and how much we know about COVID, it's almost like a full circle, knowing that it all begins with the food we eat and setting the pace of our lifespans. So Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for recognizing the role of the nutritionists in our community and the many grants that our department does actually do include maternal and child health and the nutrition that goes along with it. Thank you.
I would like to add to that. I remember selling 30 dozen farm eggs, the first farmer's market that we had in 30 minutes. That was a statistic that's burned in my brain at how popular the farmer's market was then and continues to be. I'd also like to add to what Dr. Rodriguez said, that the very, very hard work of the Public Health Department in collaboration with many partners has taken this region from one in three being diabetic to one in four being diabetic. Although that doesn't sound like much, that represents thousands of people that are not diabetic any longer. And although that sounds very, very wonderful, the national average is still one in 10. So we still have a lot of work to do. It took us 10 years to get to that point. Hopefully, the next decrease will not take another 10 years, but move very much more quickly as we continue to support our Public Health Department. You guys do an awesome job. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gowen. I would echo that. I mean, Dr. Rodriguez, your department's doing fantastic and a lot of this. Dr. Gowen, really, you know, I felt it was appropriate that you read this because you've been at the forefront of this and really pushing a lot of health initiatives for the city and, you know, none of this would have been possible without your advocacy as well. So applaud yourself. Thank you.
Okay, our next item is our public comment period. We had two citizen comment forms received. The first is from Ellen Tymer. Ellen, are you present?
I see her signed in. She is muted, though.
Okay, Ellen, can you?
She does have muted herself.
Okay, okay.
Hello, ma'am. Go ahead. You've got three minutes. Welcome. Thank you.
Okay, regarding the GBIC public grant for $450,000 for the space exploration, city, et cetera, whatever, I think it's a waste of time and money. This is a private company. They've got adequate resources to do anything that they want out at Boca Chica besides stealing the beach from the people. They don't have any approved sewer. They don't have any approved water. They truck everything in and out. They should be working on establishing sanitary conditions out there. Highway 4 is now a kill zone for all the wildlife. Nobody's addressing that particular issue. Let's see, what else have I got? Taxes. SpaceX isn't paying any taxes out there on their property, but my taxes keep going up. My neighbor's taxes keep going up. Giving SpaceX and any of their affiliated companies any tax money is a slap in the face to everybody that lives here and especially Brownsville, one of the poorest cities in the United States. If SpaceX wants to develop a resort out there, hold their feet to the fire and make them pay. Don't make the citizens pay. I doubt anything will happen out of this, but, you know, at least my two cents are put out there. And I think I speak for a lot of people that like to use the beach. You know, five days last week, we didn't get to use the beach. Monday, we didn't get to use the beach. It was slated for additional days and then we're looking at Thursday and Friday, no more beach. You know, they've gone beyond the two days a month that they were originally allotted for road closures and beach closures, and nobody's talking about that elephant in the room. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Our next comment form was received by Julio Grania. Mr. Grania, are you present?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, Mr. Grania, welcome. You've got three minutes.
Okay, I was reaching out to you guys because I currently own the Home Two Suites in Brownsville over there on Sunrise, and I've had issues since I've opened up with Doghouse, the bar. They basically have the bass of their sound system so loud that it makes the whole building vibrate and it's causing a lot of issues with government contracts that I have with guests in general and then with the nurses that I have right now. It obviously wasn't a problem in 2020 because of COVID, but it was a problem in 19 and 18, and now it's becoming a problem. And I've tried to go talk to them myself and fix it in an amicable way, but we don't get anywhere. And it's really, I need the city to step in to help out because we continue to call the police and they come out here and they say that the decimals are okay, that they're in parameters, but I don't have an issue with the, it's not the music that's the problem, it's the bass, the vibration that they're causing. And it's only with Doghouse and I don't have any issues with Mint. I don't have any issues with Ibiza that's right there. I don't have any issues with Backdoor. I mean, I'm in a swamp of bars and I don't have any problems. It's just Doghouse is the one that's causing the problem and I feel like sometimes they do it on purpose because they'll tell them, the police will say, hey, shut it down a little bit, like turn it down a little, and they will. And then as soon as they leave, they jack it back up and it's a constant problem, you know, Thursday through Sunday. And I need help. I need the city to help in and step in or somebody because if not, I don't know what else to do. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Grania. I believe we're going to take up some items similar to that at some point today or at least discuss something. I appreciate your comments and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Mayor, before we begin the public comment, I just want to add that I have personally seen how SpaceX has helped so many people and I definitely don't agree with that. I think that the entire SpaceX staff and Elon and everybody have just been incredible to this area and we are so grateful. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Our next item is Consent Agenda Items 1 through 13.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
We'll move on to public hearings. Public hearing and action on first reading to adopt Budget Amendment Ordinance Number 2021-1680 to amend the fiscal year 2021 budget for the General Fund, Capital Projects Fund, Airport Fund, and Enterprise Applications Fund, Financial Services.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Anna Mina, and I'm with the Financial Services Department.
There's a problem with your connection. It sounds very jumbled. It's scratchy. And it sounds like there's an echo as well. It's still the same issue. Everybody else is hearing that, right?
Yes, sir. It's something with her connection, Mayor.
Okay. All right, let's just, let's try and power through it. Anna, I mean, I know we're going to get an echo, but I don't know if you have any other connection or you have any other way to do it or you can go to another office or something, but let's just go ahead. I just asked everybody else mute just in case we get any residual noise.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Anna Mina, and I'm with the Financial Services Department. Today, I will be presenting on the fiscal year 2021, mid-year budget amendment. This presentation will cover the highlights.
Mayor, can we see if we have somebody else from Finance that can step in? Okay, yes, sir. Is there anybody else that can take over the presentation?
This is a big, give me one second.
Look, I can hear you perfectly fine. Okay, we'll go ahead and sub in.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Today was going to be an honest debate, but I'll go ahead and step in. Today, we have the mid-year budget amendments for fiscal year 2021. To start off, we're going to have some sales tax highlights. In 2020, the general fund and assigned fund balance is estimated, we're still going through the audit, estimated to be at the 90-day requirement. Sales tax revenues were slightly under budget last year for fiscal year 21 due to the budget change, policy change. One of the notable items is because of that extra month that we had, we initially estimated $2.1 million. We actually got $3.1 million. So there was an extra $1 million in the fund balance, which attributed to the 90-day requirements. Yeah, contingency funds in the amount of $3.8 million, which we still have this for this year. One of the items that is doing fairly well is the sales tax revenues. Year-to-date, we have about $2.3 million over budget. This is attributed to, during the budget process, we didn't know exactly how COVID was going to affect us this year. That's why we very conservatively anticipated a decrease in the sales taxes, but because the sales taxes have been fairly good, we're seeing positive variances. Next slide, please. Again, the slide on the left, it just shows the extra $1 million that we initially, that went into the fund balance. The one on the right, you'll see that on fiscal year 21 budget, 9.2, we actually received about $11.5 million. Again, we're fairly doing good in the sales taxes. This is the funding source that we're going to request to be used in order for these mid-year budget amendments. Next slide, please. Mid-year budget amendments are composed of two items, a special projects, maintenance, and operations. Next slide. Funding sources under the general fund, out of the about $2.2 million that we're anticipating mid-year budget amendments, only general fund will make about $943,000 coming from the sales tax revenues, and the other funding sources are going to be from the PEG revenue, JIBIC contributions, PUB contributions, and CARES funding. Next slide, please. Budget amendments for the general fund. The ones listed in a grayed-out area, we have Office 365 license subscriptions. The subscriptions is for converting our emails over from our legacy systems to Office 365. Anticipated budget through September 30 is about $225,000. Vibration ordinance, this is initiation by our planning department to initiate, looking into a, setting up a vibration ordinance, an amount of $75,000. This is initial cost to look into that ordinance program. The third one have the radio tower mitigation project. This is a radio tower at police department. This is the general fund chair. Police department did provide some funding sources. This item was previously approved and it required a general fund contribution of $76,000. Brownsville Historic Association, this is the maintenance, annual maintenance. This used to be budget under the hot funds, but during the budget process, it was determined that the funding of this should be coming out of general fund instead of the hot monies. The next one for $150,000 is a Brownsville Historic Association visitors building improvements. This is an association with the merger of the Customs of America and Brownsville Historic Association. Basically, the city has committed or requested improving a building in order to house the costumes off of their current premises to a premises, I believe it's referred to as the historic building. The next one is the Ozzeman Center, some matching grant. This was previously approved by city commission. This is a matching grant for them to get some funding, $55,000. EDA Sunrise Mall Shopping Center, this is a 380 agreement that we have and approved is $22,000. And then Space Ventures of $250,000. This one would be a contribution coming from JIBIC. Next slide, please. On the capital projects, the first one we have here is the Billy Mitchell Lighting Projects, $375,000. PUB will be contributing on this project. The next one is the Ruben Gutierrez Memorial Fire Range. This is for, this is for, what was it? Professional services to continue assessing the land at the firing range for the project that we have with the DPS, a project that's ongoing for having a DPS training facility in that area. And the last one is a community and, excuse me, communication and marketing, building, remodeling, construction, and equipment for $175,000. These are coming from PEG funds. These funds are designated to be used for capital-related projects for the transmission of public channel items and that sort. Next slide, please. Budget amendment for the airport. There's two items for the airport. As part of the opening up of the terminal, the old terminal had to be demolished during this time. We had to have shuttle buses in order to provide transportation from the terminal to the airplane. These temporary services for shuttle drivers is going to estimate to cost about $120,000. And janitorial services, this has to be for increased janitor services for the airport during this period of time. Both of these are going to be funded through the CARES Act funding. There is no general fund monies for these two items. That concludes the presentation. You have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Grania? Mr. Grania, what was the total? Is there, did you total it out? Because I know you had each individual item, but did you total it out for the total amendment here because it's an action item?
It's a total, and the general fund is $943,000. Total is about $2.2 million.
Okay, thank you.
I'm really excited to see the lighting project on Billy Mitchell. That's long overdue and it's going to make a really big difference.
Yeah, there's some good projects on there. Thank you. Mr. Golatsky.
Or is that Billy Mitchell Lighting Project PUB money or is it city money?
PUB money. PUB.
So why?
If I may add, the PUB passed a resolution, I believe it was last year, support of paying for those electric lights, given that many of the lights were out of service or, you know... or, you know, in need of maintenance and repair. So we've worked with them to identify proper lighting and the airport is very dark at times. And they have graciously approved the purchase of that.
Okay. And then for the communications and marketing building, do you know exactly where it's going to go? Or once it? Yeah, do we know where it's going to go?
It's. Go ahead, Lupe. Do you want me to take it or you want to?
Sure, sure.
Commissioner Kalonsky, the communications and marketing building is existing building, our, you know, historic building or tenant spaces right next to E-Bridge. So it's a really great synergy between E-Bridge, which is going to be on the corner on Adams. And then CMD, they're actually sharing kind of a patio area or space between the two buildings. So it's right adjacent to E-Bridge on the corner of Adams. I think it's 13th and Adams. But it's like right near, right across from B Metro, the plaza, the terminal.
So, okay, then I know now, sorry. Sometimes I get confused with the different names. Then the $150,000 for the visitors building, is that for the old city cemetery? I thought that's the space that the custom of Americas was going to take. So is that going to go there?
That's exactly, that's exactly what it's going to be used for.
To finish, did that, okay, I haven't been there. But so it's to finish that space or how?
There's still be some maintenance items and then there'll be some structural renovations being made as well.
And so then the other $130,000 that's also going to BHA, that'll go to which building?
That's part of the, they have a portfolio of facilities that they oversee, that they lease on behalf of the city. They used to be, that used to be funded through hot tax during last year's hot allocation. It was determined that some of that hot funding didn't really meet what they were using it for. So we shifted that money to general fund where it was more appropriate. So it's part of their admin overhead and, and maintenance cost for the museum and the variety of buildings that they have under their oversight.
And then finally, just can you tell me a little bit about the vibration ordinance? Is it for sound or is it something different?
Sure, we have Mr. Vasquez here. I think he was prepared to talk a bit about that. Is he on the call? I don't see him on here. So basically with that. Yeah, what I can mention real quick, Helen, if you, if I may, I mean, Helen can speak from a planning perspective. This is an item that we actually had already planned for as part of the fiscal 21 budget preparation. At the time, however, it was not funded because planning had higher priority items to complete, like the code rewrite. So we're bringing it forth now. But I'll let Helen speak a bit more on the planning side.
Basically, it's what we identified, you know, we just heard from a, a property owner about vibrations. So basically, it is different from the noise ordinance. Noise has specific equipment. But with regard to movement or vibration of buildings, they have, that has more specialized equipment and more of a specialized engineering specialty. And so it would be used on a case-by-case basis. We are looking at having, you know, using a nonprofit building, a national builder called IBTS to possibly find best practices for vibration ordinance because they're very typical in large cities. They're typical also in cities with a lot of historic buildings. Or you have to be careful when you, when you construct or put in a type of use that may create not only noise, but vibration. So sometimes it's used for construction and sometimes it's used for a use where you've received a complaint. And, you know, it may be something other than noise. It may be a vibration on the ground if it's very loud.
And so I'll move to approve the change to the capital.
The budget amendment?
Is this a, I think this is a public hearing.
Yes.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here on this item? Okay, do you have a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
And a second, any discussion? Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, okay. Commissioner Kalonsky, do you have a motion on the item?
I'll move to adopt the budget amendment.
To adopt the budget amendment in a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Mayor, I am very distracted with my five-year-old here for some reason. He just like for the last two meetings. But I want to be in your meeting. Are we exactly at a quorum or do we have one extra member?
We're at a quorum right now.
Oh, okay.
Can you just turn your camera off from you? What, I mean.
I'm going to say that, but just definitely I am very distracted.
Thank you, Commissioner. Laurie?
Okay, sorry. We'll move on to items for individual consideration. Item one, consideration and action to award contract to RG Enterprises LLC doing business as GNG contractors for the construction of the Brownsville Metro Eastside Transfer Station as per IFB ETS 04-0121 in the amount of $1,035,188 as budgeted multimodal transportation transit.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Commissioners. This is Will Garcia, Multimodal Transportation Director. We have you today, the next phase of our Eastside Transfer Station project. I do have with me Mr. Antonio Surieta. We'll have a small presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is, my name is Antonio Surieta. I'm the Transit and Mobility Planner with the Multimodal Transportation Department. And with me is Jenny Garcia, Assistant Director of the Multimodal Transportation Department. The project being presented to you today for your approval is to award the construction of the Brownsville Metro Eastside Transfer Station project to RG Enterprises in the amount of $1,035,188. The City of Brownsville Engineering Department, Purchasing Department and Tech Stop Staff have reviewed and concurred with the awarding of this project to RG Enterprises. The Brownsville Metro Eastside Transfer Station project will consist of three bus base, paving, curb and gutter, drainage structures, canopy, lighting, signage, striping, landscape, irrigation, ADA sidewalks, ramps, bicycle racks and a park and ride lot with approximately 23 parking spaces. In addition, this project will provide connectivity to existing bike and pedestrian amenities such as sidewalks, bikings and trail systems. The project will help in alleviating the increased demand of public transportation services, enhance customer service experience. And as recommended in the Brownsville Transit Plan from 2017, this transfer station will be strategic in the future realignment of Brownsville Metro's fixed route services and in continuing to offer a seamless connectivity to other multi-transportation. Again, we are seeking your final approval to move forward with this awarding of this project to RG Enterprises. At this time, I can answer any questions that you may have.
One thing that I missed on there, and I'm sorry if it was on there, but what is the timeframe for this project?
The timeframe on the, on the contract that, that RG, RG Enterprises has signed or it's for the, have this project completed in approximately 160 days.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move to approve.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Item two, consideration and action to award the request for qualifications, RFQ number HCS-07-0121 for healthcare consulting services to Higginbotham and authorize the agreement, City Manager's Office.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Elizabeth Walker in the office of the City Manager. And I'm so proud to bring to you tonight an item that's been a couple of months in the making towards one of our work plan initiatives. This was identified as a governance pillar item, implementation of health plan strategies for sustainability. Next slide, please. This has been an item a couple of months in the making, but before that, maybe even a couple of years in the making. Because this is an extension of several of steps towards a greater strategy to create a healthcare plan for healthier employees and a healthier bottom line. Some of the activities you've seen already in 2019 included notably adjustments to the deductibles. In 2020, there were some cost savings initiatives. We changed network administrator and pharmacy manager, for example. So then for 2021, what we bring to you in the item this evening is part of the cost strategy towards some holistic approaches in, in addressing the health plan. So I'm joined this evening with Higginbotham Firm, specifically Michael Avinevili, as well as Tommy Taylor and Albert Pettis with Briskian Pettis, their local affiliate. Next slide, please. Through this RFQ process, we wanted, we had the partnership intent to, to bring into the city a specialized consultant to be our partner to, who isn't subject matter expert in the current healthcare industry, that they have a strong understanding of high-performing components for self-insured plans and that they have no affiliation to carriers. But presently, this is not an agent arrangement. So next slide, please. We followed a procurement process through RFQs published in November, evaluated five responses in December, interviewed four of those respondents, conducted secondary interviews with two finalists. Ultimately, an internal committee recommended Higginbotham. They are a national firm as the top-ranked finalists because we noted their competitive advantage through the local office affiliation with Briskian Pettis. Next slide, please. And so we started our conversation with, with Higginbotham towards what it is that we could do together through this partnership. And we have culminated into an agreement that identifies the service scope. They would be evaluating the health plan components as well as some of the worksite products. And additionally, they would serve to support and even potentially enhance some ongoing activities. It's fitting that we started the meeting tonight with a proclamation for nutrition because within their first 100 days, they will help us to evaluate our wellness program as well as some other administrative functions listed here. Next slide, please. So to summarize essentially the term sheet of the agreement, what we have negotiated with Higginbotham Firm is this initial contract for 18-month inaugural term that would allow them the opportunity for essentially two enrollment periods so that they could benchmark the implementation of some of the recommendations that we expect to arrive at together. The agreement does speak to two one-year renewal terms. The compensation structure for this agreement is, is a blended approach. And that's truly to kind of incentivize the active management of the healthcare plan. So it's blended of a flat fee of $150,000 annually plus a percentage from any unrealized savings. That would be 15% net savings. Our market analysis indicates that typically fees are in the low single digits. And this one equates to about 1.1%. We did include some safeguards in the pay for performance. And that is, there's essentially a ceiling and a floor. Excuse me, a ceiling and, yes, a ceiling and a floor. The floor being that the, the, the savings, excuse me, the percentage on savings is after it is the first $500,000 savings is realized. So essentially then, Higginbotham would realize a percentage of net savings after it is that they've already paid for themselves. After it is, they've already helped us to recoup the cost of their annual fee. And then additionally, the, the ceiling is not to exceed $350,000 that they could realize annually. Their targets, what they estimate based in their professional opinion and then evaluation of some of preliminary data is that they could achieve $1.5 million in savings the first year and as much as $7 million over three years. Next slide, please. So this is then to illustrate those safeguards. The left-hand most column is, is essentially the net spend illustrated. Let's estimate it at $13 million for the healthcare plan. Once it is year one, implementing some savings measures, you could see they're illustrated in turquoise, what would be their performance pay as that 15% of unrealized savings. But for year two, should the commission renew then this agreement? You can see there that in the red that this unrealized savings towards the city as a general fund on program monies would increase. And yet there's the evidence of their cap at $350,000. The teal does not grow at same proportion as the red. Next slide, please. So how do they believe that they will arrive at that savings? Here it is, it's, it's broken down generally where it is they expect to, to realize some savings, 5% on pharmacy benefits, as much as 20% on major specialties, open networks, value-based primary care, some administrative and oversight changes and some plan design. Next slide, please. So upon award this evening, the next steps towards the implementation process, Higginbotham would conduct a current plan analysis, some strategic planning, help us to develop an action plan, implement, communicate and then provide ongoing service and support. Through all these five phases, we, we do intend to create a insurance subcommittee of the City Commission, much like how it is we already have a budget subcommittee that would work with us hand-in-hand with Higginbotham through implementation. Next slide, please. Certainly I'll entertain any questions you might have about this RFQ process, the agreement as presented. And again, too, the vendor representatives are here this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. I, the only question I would have had would have been just to, to ensure that, that they pay for themselves. And it looks like that's been addressed pretty well. So that's really all I have, thanks. Does anybody else have any questions?
Well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And thank you, gentlemen, for being here.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
Do you have any motions on this item?
To approve.
A motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you very much for this opportunity and we are here to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pettis. Appreciate your time.
Item three, consideration and action to approve the substantial amendment to the 2017, 2018 and 2019 City of Brownsville annual action plans to reallocate $500,000 of uncommitted community development block grant funds to the Samano Project, City Manager's Office, Office of Strategic Initiatives.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Efren Trujillo. I'm the Assistant Director for the Office of Strategic Initiatives. Here today for your consideration and action is the substantial amendment to the 2017, 2018 and 2019 annual action plans. Next slide, please. Compared in 1924, the State National Bank is a prominent building in our downtown. The building historically contained a banking floor and two retail spaces. and two retail spaces on the first floor with offices lining double loaded corridors on the upper floors. CDCBE has launched multiple funding sources to rehabilitate the building by utilizing historic and low-income tax credits along with federal and foundation funding. The estimated cost will be a little bit over $10 million for the project. The project will contain a grocery store and a small cafe on the first floor and affordable apartment units on the upper floors. The rehabilitation will retain the characteristic features of a historic building following the Texas Historical Commission direction. The project will also have an economic impact as it will provide up to 30 new direct jobs and up to 600 indirect jobs. This project will also target the economic development pillars along with the planning and zoning and development pillars that you guys set forth in your vision sessions. Next slide, please. The substantial amendment process for the following changes. That's, that's the third slide. Thank you. The substantial amendment process for the following changes is to reallocate community development block grants funding from the 2017, 2018, and 2019 annual action plan as outlined in the table below to support the Samano Project with $500,000. Next slide, please. In order to reallocate the funding as per our citizen participation plan, we must amend our action plans if one of the following decisions are not, decisions are made. For this project, we needed to amend our action plans as the prior was not previously covered in any of the 2017, 18, and 19 action plans. Next slide, please. As part of our substantial amendment process, we had a public comment period for 30 days. We hosted two virtual public hearings on February 25th and March 20, March 4th. The next step will be your consideration for approval for this item. And after that, we'll be submitting the substantial amendment for heads of acknowledgement. Next slide, please. Let me know if you have any questions and thank you very much.
Is there any questions on this?
Just what I don't understand is, is it money that we hadn't used up before but was allocated to Brownsville? Or how, how does it work since we're back talking?
Yes, so we have funding from projects and administration savings. So we had that funding already allocated in our coffers, you would say. So we're just reallocating that funding to project.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
To approve?
No motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor? Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Our next item are executive session items. I will read those. Executive session, item one, executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.087, subsection 1, to discuss or deliberate regarding commercial or financial information that the Greater Brownsville Incentives Corporation has received from a business prospect and the governmental body seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the City of Brownsville and with which the Greater Brownsville Incentives Corporation is conducting economic development negotiations regarding the following pending economic development projects and prospects. Project Custom, City Manager's Office. Item two, executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.087, subsection 1, to discuss or deliberate regarding commercial or financial information that the Greater Brownsville Incentives Corporation has received from a business prospect that the governmental body seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the City of Brownsville and with which the Greater Brownsville Incentives Corporation is conducting economic development negotiations regarding the following pending economic development projects and prospects. Project Channel, City Manager's Office. Item three, closed session pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code regarding the lease of real property if deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the City of Brownsville in negotiations with a third person. And pursuant to Section 551.087 of the Texas Government Code to deliberate financial or other incentives to a business prospect the city seeks to have locate within the city in relation to the lease of land and provision of financial incentives for Project Sky, City Manager's Office.
All right, do we have any motions to go into executive session?
I'll move that we go into executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? All right, we'll see you in executive session. Thanks.
It is now 5:57 PM and we will go into executive session. 15 PM. Let me just do a quick roll call. We have the mayor. We have Commissioner Golotsky. We have Commissioner Gowen. And do we have Commissioner Tetra? Yes, we have Commissioner Tetra.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Okay, I'll read possible action on any items as discussed in executive session. Item one, consideration and action, if any, to approve the provision of economic development incentives in part through the finalization and execution of the unimproved property real estate sales contract pertaining to Project Custom, City Manager's Office.
Thank you. Do we have any motions on executive item one?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Item two, consideration and action to approve funding for and the development of a 380 economic development agreement between the City of Brownsville and principals of Project Channel to provide incentives for Project Channel, City Manager's Office.
Thank you. Do you have any motions on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve pending legal review and wellness amendments.
Body of life amendments?
Body of life amendments.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. The next item is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Stand adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
There being, sorry about all of the interruptions. It's having a cranky five-year-old. I'm sure you all understand.
Have a good evening, Commissioner. Bye. Thanks, everybody.
There being no further business to come before the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Upon duly-made motion, the meeting has adjourned at 6:20 PM.